The time is, the time has come for the Monday, July 1st, 2019, regular city council meeting. Roll call please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Millsio.
Here.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. To lead us in invocation, we'll be led by Dr. Patricia D. Hyman Kidd from Power Prayer Partners Ministries for Prosperity in Waukegan, Illinois. Immediately following that, we'll have the young men and young ladies come up and lead us in the pledge from the Junior Illinois Police Academy, alright? Dr. Patricia. All rise please.
Eternal God, we come before you, Father, in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, we come first of all to tell you thank you. Lord, we exhort you, we come bringing your word, and Father, you have told us to come in supplication and in thanksgiving. So Father, we come thankful with grateful hearts that we are able to lift up the name of Jesus. And Father, we come tonight, Lord God, even as we have gathered in this place, we just come lifting up the community. We lift up, Father, every Alderman, we lift up every constituent. Father, every need that we have, you've already told us that you have met. So Father, we come to just say thank you for meeting every need. We speak the word of peace, and we lose, Father God, your wisdom as never before in this place, upon our minds, upon our hearts, and upon our spirits. And Father, we just thank you for the spirit of unity. We thank you, Father, for what you're doing in and through this community, and through each and every one of us. So Father, in the mighty name of Jesus, we want to just say thank you and amen.
Amen.
Point this way. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is mayor's comments. Today was a historic day for the city of Waukegan and Lake County. The city of Waukegan, correction, this afternoon, Governor JB Pritzker and the Honorable Madam Lieutenant Governor Juliana Stratten visited our city council chambers along with many state senators, state representatives, county officials, other mayors, as well as former mayors and their families to celebrate the Capitol bill and the long-awaited Waukegan casino. Thank you to all those who attended, and we look forward to announcing in the coming days the transparent and competitive process for that Waukegan, Illinois license. Independence Day Parade, as we all love our wonderful Independence Day Parade, however, this year was called off due to weather. Nevertheless, thank you to all the attendees, as well as the organizers for being proactive in keeping the public safe from the unfortunate weather conditions. 2020 census, please join, please make sure that you grab a fire outside the city council chamber for jobs working on the 2020 census. From my understanding, throughout the country, we're looking for roughly 300,000 part-time, full-time employees to help out with the census. It is important to get an accurate count on the number of residents in our community, so we encourage everyone to get involved with this process. I'm also glad to see the commitment of the state of Illinois, of major dollars into getting accurate census numbers. But more importantly, I am happy to see that the census not include a citizenship question, which I believe was a blatant attempt, and let's call it what it is, an attack, to target our Latino community and other immigrants. For those who do not know, the Supreme Court informed the administration, the current administration, that that question cannot be a part of the census process. I think they moved that question back down to the lower courts, but as it stands today, it will not be on the census questions. Upcoming events, Waukegan fireworks are Thursday, July 4th, starting at 9:30 PM. Two spots will have music before the fireworks. Audio beans will be at Steiner Pavilion, and the Blues, the Family Robertson, will be at Dockside Dogs. Be safe, and as always, enjoy. Pianists Katrina Suttonman and Vincent Catalino will perform at Family Piano Riverside Room on Saturday, July 6th, at 7:30 PM. Bay Marine has two upcoming events, the annual fundraiser for our U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary on Thursday, July 11th, with live music and more, and an open house on Saturday, July 13th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. You don't have to be a voter to enjoy these events. Scoop 2019 is Friday and Saturday, July 12th and 13th, in downtown Waukegan. Enjoy live music both nights, the Waukegan Days Carnival, good food, and of course, classic and custom cars. Gospel on the Beach is Saturday, July 13th, noon until 8:00 PM at Steiner Pavilion. Headlining this popular free event is Todd Geldberth, known for his passionate musical style. Over the weekend, our yoga and Tai Chi workshops at the beach kicked off. We saw great participation with many people returning from last year. Both workshops are free every Saturday morning at Steiner Pavilion throughout the summer. For the Alderman, I want to make an announcement that, for those who know, the former WMS building, that's, will be right now directly across from soon-to-be, oh god, Culvers, soon-to-be Culvers. That building was vacant for what, two years, Alderman?
Yeah.
Right now, Astronics have taken about three-fourths of the building right now, and they brought their operation from Ernie Kruger on Sunset, and the operation from Itasca. The other portion of the building, the other portion of the building, the southern end of the building, will be taken up by the company named by Overture Promotions. They are a certified, woman-owned promotional marketing firm with 170 employees, and are estimated to move in date late September, and are working on getting building permits as we speak. So I'm really happy to say that Noel, Russ, and Steve have really worked on this project to get that building filled after two years. So congratulations to Noel and your team, awesome job. Alright, item two, minutes. Motion, Motion Alderman Kirkwood, Second Ball Alderman Taylor, to approve regular meeting minutes from May, June 17th, 2019. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motions passed and carried. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have three minutes. Thank you. Ken Endress. Please speak right into the microphone, sir.
Thank you for this time. Our name is Ken Endress. I am a representative of the commanding officer of Naval Station Great Lakes, and just wanted to tell you that I was recently appointed, so that's the reason why I'm up to visit your council, as well as the other communities in the area. And we know that sailors live in your community, purchase in your community, as well as military people who live here, and the civilians who live here that work in Great Lakes. Myself, I've been there for 40 years, I live in the city of Zion, and I go to church here in Waukegan, so I'm very familiar with your community. I have a booklet that I'd like to give to each one of you, and I have more copies that I can lay out on the table for the audience to pick up or other people to have. Basically, my job is a community planner, liaison officer for the commanding officer, and I have another alternative way of communicating with the Navy to Great Lakes. So if you want to speak with the commanding officer, obviously that is one of the better ways of doing it, but another alternative way is through my office. And I would welcome anyone that has a question or concern, please contact me or the tech.
Well, thank you and welcome. Welcome to our, well, I should say, welcome to the community, live in Zion, but welcome to the new position, which will probably open you up to more different things throughout Lake County, but more particularly Waukegan. Thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
A graduation. I gotta get to a graduation, we'll give you a call to get that set up.
Next, Carol Stewart.
Good morning, good evening to all. I'm Carol Stewart, and I live at 1517 13th Street of Waukegan, Illinois, across the street from Twin City Park. And you know what a problem that could be, because the people in the park, they throw paper and everything, and it goes in my yard. Now, I tried to keep the corner lot that I have for over 30 years, I tried to keep it trimmed, and looking nice, and all like that, you know, as a good citizen would. Now, I am asking if there could be a garbage can placed, it's not directly in front of my house, but across the street in the park. We need an extra garbage can, and maybe the people would put their trash bottles and cans into the garbage can. Okay?
I hear you, Ms. Stewart.
Okay, that's all that I have.
Thank you. Mike, hit you.
Thank you. Ms. Selena Gomez below.
Good evening. Oh, good evening. I just wanted to give a few quick announcements for our audience and our Aldermen. We will be closed for 4th of July, as most places are, but we will be open on Friday the 5th, and offering adult coloring if you want to lower the excitement level the day after fireworks. We will also have our concert on Friday, it's going on as planned, rain or shine. And tomorrow is my book club, we'll be reading All the Light That You Cannot See. Next month, we'll be reading Roundhouse by Louis Erdrich, and then next we'll be reading Educated. So I encourage you, if you've read them, or if you want to read them, to come out and have a discussion about that on the first Tuesday evenings. You will soon see new faces at the library, as we are in a hiring period, so I'm really excited that we're gonna get some new people, and have some new and exciting things happening at the library, so don't be surprised if you see new people. We are preparing for the arrival of the Ray Bradbury statue. We're hoping to, the plans are to have our celebration on August 22nd, and more information will be coming out about that. There's still a lot of stuff that needs to be done in the front, but I think it's gonna be really fabulous once we get that there. In addition, census 2020, I'm also very glad that we no longer have, at least as of today, we no longer have the citizenship question. We are working hard on the census at the library, preparing a toolkit for our partners and other people within the city and neighboring libraries, so that we can make sure that our communities are educated about the importance of answering the census questionnaire. And lastly, we are looking for trustees. We have three positions open, so if you are aware of a citizen of Waukegan that is a library supporter, or would love to become a library supporter, we would love to have someone who has experience within the community, roots within the community, and has, you know, a love of reading and a love of libraries. So they just need to apply to the city, so I want to put that out there, because we could use at least three new trustees. And that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah Zlatnik. Deborah?
Yeah, there you are.
I just want, I live on Glendenning, and there's an issue with Whitmore's service station, and last, this past Saturday, there was an event there. But I want to point out, my parents bought this property in 1967, so we've been there in that neighborhood for 52 years.
Right there, that's fine, isn't it? Yeah, just speak a little closer. There you go.
Okay, so, you know, it's been a nice, quiet neighborhood, and we used to use Whitmore's for gasoline and service. Now, I took over the house and have been maintaining it for five years, and Whitmore's has been an ongoing issue, parking their flatbeds on the street. In this event on Saturday, I understand that it was passed, like en masse, by the council, which seems like an easy thing to do, but you don't know the repercussions. There was no planning for the parking, and they called it a block party, but nobody from the neighborhood knew about it. There weren't handouts, and nobody from the neighborhood walked over. It was all people who drove in, some license plates were from Wisconsin, and both sides of the street were loaded with cars, and in front of my house, there was a big van that was 20 feet or more long, I've got a photo of it. And it's dangerous, I didn't want to back out of my driveway, because cars are parked across the street, you don't want to bump into them. So they had music going, and the house right next to them, a man just came home from an operation. Like, there's no consideration for the neighborhood, and I'd say they are not a good neighbor. And this towing business has taken over, and it's extremely dangerous when the tow trucks are coming and going. I look out my front door, I'm three houses down from theirs, and like, when the weather's bad, you see tow trucks going in both directions. And the street, Greenwood, was originally a quiet shopping street, and I understand it's Zone B2 that says "community shopping." It's not for industry or heavy traffic. But now we get the traffic, people coming off the highway at higher speeds, the fire station is up a little bit, so ambulances are always running down the street. Today, when I was coming here, the tow trucks pull off of their property at an angle onto Greenwood. So hopefully, you know, they see cars before they start pulling out. But the event on Saturday was very bad, that they were parking on both sides, and then they pulled out one of their own trucks and parked it to block so cars wouldn't turn in off of Glen Denning. But that also blocked the stop sign to see at the corner. So, I mean, they didn't think ahead, they could have had sawhorses to block the entryway.
Thank you very much, thank you. Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, founding chief president of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. You know, we lost a young man on the south side of Waukegan this past week, a young man by the name of Avion Cotton. I'm not here to really call into question, you know, as to what might have been implied as a cause of death, or, you know, the swallowing of a white powdery substance, or whatever the case it is, but I do know, and I'm aware, of people who have swallowed such substances, and to the point where they have went to the hospital, either had it cut out, pumped out, but they were able to live to tell about it and talk about it. So, but I am calling into question a few other things. I filed a FOIA request, leading to this young man's death. And the FOIA request, I'm filing it in the best interest of the citizens, and the interest of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, because we know there's the police truth, there's the community which said that what they saw and what is alleged, but then, I want to see the facts of what is being reviewed, of what we have on the tapes, police body cameras. So I filed a FOIA request for the release of those, so we can see the facts, as opposed to what the police say is happening, as well as what the community is saying. And I'm just really perplexed about the fact that, here it is, in a predominantly black and brown community, I've mentioned this time and time again, the lack of diversity. Here we are on Martin Luther King Avenue. Now, we are paid over 100 to 150, close to $200,000 in sensitivity training. Now, I was at that location on that day, and unfortunately, on that day, all the officers that were there when I got there investigating, as well as the ones who came afterwards, nobody looked like the young black man that was laying there dying, or Dr. Martin Luther King, who the street is named in honor of. You guys really, I mean, come on, guys, you know, and I don't want to put this on one person, but we gotta get better about this diversity. That's not sensitivity, when you got a young black man laying there, and it's being alleged by the community that the police is the perpetrators, but everybody that show up at the police scene don't look like the community, or the young man lying there that is dead. So surely, you all can definitely do something about that. But I also want to address, if I can for a minute, young black men of the community, police, whether it's in Waukegan or throughout this nation, will kill you. Open your mind, crack a book, and learn something about yourselves. This is a dangerous situation and dangerous times, when we look at the people who are at the helm, like the Trump administration. But I'm not putting it all on him too, but I'm also gonna hold, we have to hold our community accountable. But definitely, as taxpayers, we deserve to see a fair representation of our community, of the taxes that is going in.
Thank you, Brother Blanks, thank you.
So you guys gotta do something about the diversity in this community.
Thank you. Josh Beadle?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, audience members. I am here to, I'm going to echo Mayor Cunningham's comments about Scoop. Please come down to downtown Waukegan, enjoy Scoop on the 12th, 13th of the month. I'm also gonna add in that my organization, I'm sorry, I'm Josh Beadle with Waukegan Main Street. I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. We are also hosting an event on Art Walk this month, the Waukegan Moley Fest, first ever of its kind. Come on down and enjoy, Genesee Street. I'm also here to say one more thing, and I'm gonna just look at my notes to get this right. One of our downtown businesses was just awarded the Best in Show for New Exhibitors, a Cuban Experience, won Best in Show at the International Premium Cigar and Pipe Retailers. So if you are a cigar smoker or a pipe smoker, come on down, we have award-winning cigars in downtown Waukegan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ygenia Briscoe?
Good evening. So the first, I have a couple things that I want to address, but first I want to start with the issue of the ETO. I'm not quite sure where this is being addressed. My recommendation, Mayor, is that when you do your opening comments, can you include in there an update for the residents and the people that are here, what's happening with the ETO? I know the results just came out, but I think that this would be a perfect venue in your opening comments, if you can also address, and this is just my recommendation, you do whatever you want, but I think, as a resident here, it'd be great if you can update the community on what's happening with ETO in your comments, suggestion there. Second point is that, at the last city council meeting, there was a vote to bring on a consultant to help out the lawyer, $48,000 plus a $7,000, I think it was total about $54,000. So I know that we approved a budget, and the budget is in deficit, and it didn't say where that $54,000 was gonna come from in order to support bringing on that additional person. So another recommendation from me, whenever there are dollars that the council is representing, is stating that needs to happen, it would be great if you guys can say where that money's coming from, because as far as I'm concerned, we're in a deficit, so I don't know where that money's coming from in order to support bringing on that help for that lawyer. The other thing is that, that's it, just recommendations. The other thing, this is my third time actually approaching the council to talk about garage sales. This, for me, is kind of like a thorn in my side, I'm gonna keep coming until something is done. I know the last time I was here, Mayor, you had suggested to some of the council persons to look into it. My recommendation at the time was that we start charging a permit, you need a permit for a garage sale, if you remember. And my recommendation was that we come up with like a $25 permit fee. However, if you don't have a permit, you're fined $200. I know this past weekend, in my neighborhood, and I live in the 3rd Ward, Hi-Grig, that I counted 25 garage sales, just in my neighborhood. And I know that there was an issue as far as not having code enforcement on that day, but I think that if this was put in place, that would pay for code enforcement. I can, I mean, there's so many garage sales here in Waukegan, there has to be something. And before, there are so many of them, it kind of brings down our neighborhood, too. So I would like to bring this back to the table again, for the councilmen to take a look at what we need to do in order to enforce garage sales here in Waukegan. And my last point is that-
Thank you, Ms. Briscoe, thank you. Charles Rush?
Charles Rush, I live on Sheridan Road. I'll start with a quote from a gentleman of the past, Oscar Ameringer.
There you go, yeah, thanks, Charles.
Okay, I can hear myself. Oscar Ameringer, back in the 20s or 30s, mentioned that, "Politics was the gentle art of getting votes from the poor and money from the rich by promising to protect each from the other." Right now, promises seem to abound by the suggestion that we need to expand gambling in Waukegan. Gambling in communities and in the state has kind of a broken history. It's an excuse for bad government. Right now, they're looking at increasing dense packing, pretty much, video services down here, and those proponents seem to have lucked out, because somebody couldn't measure something along the street here, that it might conflict with current laws regarding proximity to a church. It's not the way to go, and by what I mentioned, is bad government, that the city has to take a serious look at getting together and coordinating a city-managed form of government. A lot of people here, and have served in the past, are not qualified to make decisions, not educated to make those decisions. Other things might have come to pass, like the proper development of the lakefront area. Right now, one of the stopping points seems to be a water tower down there that people like to keep standing as it rusts. It is a symbol of the industrial past, I suggest they may want to go north of Seaho's Drive and look at a couple piles over there of PCBs and asbestos carcinogens. Drive and look at a couple piles over there of PCBs and asbestos carcinogens. And look at that as a symbol of Waukegan's industrial past. You're on the lake, it's a chestnut treasure-
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Thank you.
-to get it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman and members of the audience. I am here just to relay what happened about a month ago. So back in May, the board of Waukegan held a forum and just a listening event over at the high school in regards to lights at Wise Field. And so we talked, and it was about an hour, and we gave a lot of information, and then we opened it up for what we call Q and A, which I know is our favorite time of any event. And one of the questions came from one of our high school students, a cheerleader, in regards to the lights and what she had to say to the board and those who were attendants is, what took so long? And so I'm here this evening to just encourage you all to make what I said last Tuesday, after the board took a vote in order to authorize us to set aside the funds for the Wise Field Light Project. As I said, let there be light, but Mr. Alajakis, our communications person, let me know that there was one final step, which was to get approval from the Alderman and the city. And so I'm hoping that this evening, when it comes before you, that you vote yes in order to approve the lights at Wise Field. And I hope that you and the entire community will join me outside this fall, if we get the approval and we move forward, underneath the Friday night lights. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, Alderman, thank you, community, and I hope that you vote yes. Thank you.
Okay, Waukegan taxpayers, are you ready? Here we go, hang on tight. Mayor, the immigrant community first, number one, are still awaiting, en writing your response, your stance in regards to ICE immigration collaborating, get the police department with them or not, any sharing information, et cetera, et cetera? We really need that, okay? Number two, both our mayor and several Aldermen were MIA, missing in action at yesterday's parade. It is your civic duty, your job, to show up at these community events, as such, as big as this, as the parade. Mayor, the perception in the community, by many, is that you're seen as obsessed. I know you're really excited about gaming, casinos, stuff like that, you attend all of their events, but you're forgetting about your real obligations to the community. You do not work for Springfield, you work for us, the taxpayers. So we should be the number one priority. The residents do not buy and accept any baloney excuse for not being present in the parade yesterday. I give you an F for your civic duties to our community, but I give it a plus to our fire chief, who not only walked the parade, but he passed out free American flags to every single resident on the route. That was your job! You cannot just pass off your job to another department head. No one can replace you. You should have been there. Next, number three. A lot of residents have given me photos, I don't want to do this, I want to, it's an individual, in my opinion, is screaming for help, we need to avoid a tragedy from happening. A lot of residents have complained about an Alderman attending public events intoxicated, seen intoxicated on the front yard. Please, whatever we need to do, we need to help this individual before something drastic happens. And talking about casinos, may I suggest, Mayor, since you love them so much, read the most recent July, June 27th report on Las Vegas casinos, in which they talk about that for the fifth year in a row, it has decreased by 6% as far as earnings and money
Thank you, Margaret. Jonathan Hadnot? Jonathan Hadnot?
I'm-
Oh, you're right? Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm severely under stress. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Jonathan Hadnot. I am the head football coach at Waukegan High School, and I'm here to follow Brandon Ewing's comments, which is usually a difficult thing to do, but I'm gonna do my best to talk about stakeholders other than the high school and us, giving the opportunity to light up Wise Field. As a football coach, I'm right in the fire. I see the, I see our kids every day. I look in their eyes, I look in their faces, and I look at, and I hear their conversations. And one of the things that we've attempted to do is create this culture of excellence. And it's hard to say that to them in their face when I don't do anything about it. So one of the things we've tried and true, as Brandon alluded to, is we work very hard to re- to re-energize our programs and get our kids a little bit more active. As far as the stakeholders in our community, it's more than just football, it's more than just the athletic programs, it's a community thing. Lights at Wise Field will open up a ton of opportunities to bring our community together. I know that we talk a lot about families and the lack of involvement from parents, but I tell you, as a father, and I have to feed my family on a Saturday afternoon, I think I'm gonna make that choice and do that. But on Friday nights, I think there'll be a great opportunity to bring them together, give them an opportunity to engage in something special, and I'm pretty sure that you guys, when you vote tonight, will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So in November of 2018, I found out about ETO. I had moved away already and been living away for a month. Two weeks after I moved out of the second ward and into the sixth ward, I was feeling better. I had been experiencing headaches, numbness in my face, numbness in my extremities, severe gastrointestinal issues where I couldn't eat anything except for four things, had lost a lot of weight. Seven months forward, I find out that our levels of ethylene oxide are at 10 micrograms per meter squared, 500 times the actionable level of the EPA, 500 times. It wasn't in my head. For years, I thought I was going crazy, and it wasn't in my head. And all of us are experiencing it. In Sterigenics, they tested for 23 micrograms per meter squared, and their radius that was affected was 25 miles. At 10, I'm guesstimating 10 miles. That's all of Waukegan, North Chicago, Park City, Beach Park, and further. It's an outrage, and it's still open because we are the guinea pigs. Sterigenics was shut down by the Illinois EPA the day that those results came out, and we are still experiencing ethylene oxide in our air right now. We are breathing it in this room right now. Our children, who are most affected, are experiencing the effects right now. And we should be outraged. We should be calling the governor, and we should have our elected officials helping shut them down. It's a mutagen and a carcinogen. And it is a mutagen at any level.
Hello. So since the last council meeting, the first round of ethylene oxide results have come out, as my wife mentioned. When we have winds out of the northeast, we see levels near Medline that are 500 times higher than the EPA's actionable limit, as she mentioned, 10 micrograms per meter squared. When winds are from the northwest, we see levels five to six times higher than local controls a half mile away in the Greenbelt Forest Preserve and around in the second ward, where we used to live. Despite calls from state representatives and U.S. senators urging the governor to seal the Medline plant, or at least seal it until the upgrades at Medline are completed, there's been no movement on this from Governor Pritzker. Pritzker did come to town today to re-sign his casino bill. So with that, Waukegan has 120 days to find a casino owner-operator to take on the property and build a casino. But the proposed property is squarely in the area most affected by ETO emissions from Medline. Representative Mayfield has said that the authority to seal this plant lies with the municipality and the county. So I'm asking you to please take action. 500 times higher than the actionable level is too high for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Edgar Sandoval. I wanted to talk a little bit about the video gaming expansion that's being proposed in downtown Waukegan. I appreciate the conversation, last city council meeting that was had around it, and how the vote turned out, because I think it gives people some time to think through and offer more comments and feedbacks. I think one of my concerns is the way that tourism and economic growth are used as rhetoric to justify the casino, especially considering there aren't any metrics or measures in place of how we're going to measure the success, success of the casino. What does it mean for the casino to be successful in Waukegan? What are the metrics that we're considering? Are we considering just GDP per capita income increases, jobs taken or created for Waukegan residents? Are we talking about successful implementation of some of the programs that are being talked about? Or investments in the communities that are most around the casino? Yeah, because I think another issue that I see with using economic growth as a blanket statement for the expansion of the casino is that it doesn't actually address some of the underlying social inequities that Waukegan residents have to deal with, right? And so whether that's inadequate access to transportation through our public transportation or the ethylene oxide emissions, there are other things at play that I think are more urgent and should be addressed. But yeah, I think I just wanted to bring that up, and I have people, give them a thought about what are the metrics of success that we want this casino to have in Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Council. I just wanted to thank those Aldermen that were able to make it to the Clean Power Lake County Environmental Justice Rally. It really means a lot, and I know the mayor sent someone from his office, so I appreciate that. We're gonna continue working, trying to talk about renewable energy and how to make sure we have a just transition for our coal plant that we have here. And I also wanted to inform the council that Faith in Place has hired two part-time staffers to work specifically in the community of Waukegan about energy efficiency. So it's gonna be about changing behavior and working with comment and making sure that we are using the most effective energy efficiency appliances that they have and that our residents, that our community members are taking advantage of that. If you look on your comment bill, there is a designated line for these kind of community outreach. So we already paying for this program, we're making sure that comment's actually putting the money into the community. So more information on that to come, we'll be hosting public meetings so that the community can get involved and can be a part of this process of making sure they're taking advantage of the things they already paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Today, I would like to talk about these three topics, the supervision of homes in Waukegan, compliance with the ordinances and regulations, options to confront basement rental. There was a five-year-old girl whose parents were alcoholic. The mother died from cirrhosis, and the girl had to take care and look for her alcoholic father in the neighbor's houses at 9:00 p.m. They live in a basement full of leftovers and cockroaches on the floor. There were people consuming drugs, and sometimes the girl was alone without eating. The homeowner told me that the house she lived in was her house, and for this reason, the house was not inspected. Another person told me that usually rented houses are not the ones inspected. According to the city, all houses are supposed to be inspected. However, how is possible to see homeowners spending thousands of dollars fixing their basement with a kitchen, bathroom, and bedrooms, and the city supervisor don't notice? It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to do with lack of inspectors, but with the negligence to enforce the code compliance. They're supposed to have a list of items to oversee in order to inspect following an organized process. If the city inspector announces an inspection date for the home, the homeowner and the renters move the furniture, microwave, and other appliances from the basement the day before. However, it still looks like an empty apartment. Everybody see? To solve this problem, I think transparency is important in order to confront the situation and not to have a double standards. In my opinion, there are two alternatives. First, the city is supposed to not allow any type of partition at the basement. Second, if partitions, bathroom and kitchens exist, the homeowner must agree to bring up to the code and open an additional entrance and add proper windows. It will cost money, but homeowner will have an extra income, and the most important issue, safety, is guaranteed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens. This issue came up at the last minute, so I did not have time to prepare much for this, these comments. But apparently, we're gonna be paying someone $48,000 a year to handle FOIA requests. The mayor may think he's hit the jackpot with this new gambling bill, but it's still too early to start handing out party favors. Just to get some perspective on what this bill means in terms of dollars and cents for Waukegan, 5% of a million dollars is $50,000. Divided four ways. Waukegan's share, 70%, equals $35,000. We have to pay someone almost twice as much just to take that money in and count it. Now, it's gonna take nearly $13 million of casino gross profits before we can pay our city attorney, and he says he doesn't have time to handle FOIA requests. The city clerk has helpfully supplied testimonial saying that her staff is beleaguered. Well, I, as someone who's filed several FOIA requests over the years, I know that what they do is they pass out an application, they check it for completeness, they stamp it, they file, send it off to the appropriate department. That department collects the data, sends it to the city's attorney, who checks it for what they need to check it for, and then they send it back to the clerk's office, who distribute it to the applicants. It's hardly an onerous process, and certainly not worth $48,000 to alleviate. So I'm asking this city council, the Alderman, to vote this measure down. This is just an expansion of tax dollars. $450,000 is quite an increase on what we used to pay city attorneys. City Attorney Bob Long should have known that FOIA requests were part of the deal which he bargained for. A deal is a deal, just stick it out and negotiate a better deal next time around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak to the first ward alderman and the mayor. I've kind of put, tearing down, rebuilding the Genesee projects. I haven't brought that up for maybe over a year because I pretty much seen everyone had tunnel vision with this casino. So now that we got the casino deal out the way and we know it's a go, maybe we can start putting these projects back on the drawing board, because I do know when Mollie was in, that was on the drawing board pretty much, and his intentions were to tear them down and rebuild. But as I said, we haven't spoke on that for some time, so I'm asking the first ward alderman and the mayor, can we put that back on the drawing board? Because those people deserve better. I don't know if either of you have been over there lately. The one small building behind Madonia Brothers, they've actually got a tarp, a blue tarp, upon the roof to stop rain from coming in. That's pretty bad. And I haven't been over there within the last several months, but I know the last time I was there in a few other units, you could see clean through the brick. You could see the outside. So maybe, like I say, now that we got the casino here, now maybe we could give those projects some focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
All right, all right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming again, and let's move on. Item four, resolution, proclamation, presentation, appointment. Proclamation, July 7th through the 13th is Chi Edify Week. And to read the proclamation, Madam Clerk, please read the proclamation. Once the proclamation is read, then we'll get a motion on the floor in a second to approve, and then we'll present. All right, ladies?
Chi.
Chi. Okay. Chi Edify. Yes, ma'am, and I better, I should know that, I'm Greek. What am I doing? I didn't mess that up. Sorry about that, ladies.
Proclamation 713 is Chi Edify Week, whereas Chi Edify Sorority is a professional organization of nurses and nursing students established on October 13th, 1932, and has grown to 8,000 members, 142 chapters in 33 states, in District of Columbia and St. Thomas and the U.S. Virgin Islands. And whereas the local Nu-Fi chapter was chartered April 15th, 1995, at Greater Faith Baptist Church, with 12 charter members installed by the national president, and two of those charter members, Carol Stewart and Josie Ellis, are still active. And whereas the organization's members are involved in service projects and programs throughout Lake County, Illinois, and Kenosha Racing Counties in Wisconsin, which include health screenings and health education. And whereas the organization's members contribute to programs for infants, youth, seniors, community outreach, health, leadership development, and recruitment and retention of nursing students and nurses. And whereas the Nu-Fi chapter provided over $15,000 to qualified African-American nursing students enrolled at the College of Lake County. And whereas the Nu-Fi chapter financially supports local humanitarian efforts provided by the Staben House and Love, Inc. in Waukegan, Illinois, and St. Jude's Research Hospital in Memphis, Tennessee, along with global humanitarian efforts as far away as Africa and Haiti. And whereas the Nu-Fi chapter is co-hosting the 65th Boulet and Educational Conference from July 7th through the 13th, which will engage members in current innovations that shape future practices in research, policy, education, and service. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim that July 7th through the 13th is Chi Edify Week in recognition of the service programs and projects focused on health promotion and disease prevention for Waukegans and the broader communities vulnerable, underserved, and high-risk populations. And be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented at the city council meeting on the first day of July 2019.
All right. Motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Rivera. Are there any questions to the motion? Sue, roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Yes.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
All right, motion's been passed and carried. Any Ms. Stewart, since she one of the founders, would you like to make any comments? You know, the president, should the president be with you? There's the president, but we all put deference to the founders, right? Am I right, ladies?
Yes.
All right, always.
That's right. It's rare.
She wants me to speak. She should really speak.
Yes, she should.
I would have to say that Chi Edify, Nu-Fi Chapter, is very honored to be in the city of Waukegan. We actually enjoy participating in community events. Those of you who were at the Fourth of July parade and made it to the water station before it started raining, we were actually there in green and yellow, passing out water to the participants. We thoroughly enjoyed it. We were very sad that it did start raining. We do anticipate that you will see us a lot more in the community. So when you see the green and yellow, it's us. It's a professional nursing organization. Majority of the members are minority African-American nurses. Majority of us are females. The Boulet that we will be having will be hosted in Lombard, Illinois. There will be almost 600 professional black nurses at that facility. So it's going to be amazing. So thank you so much for the proclamation regarding the Boulet and the Chi Edify Week. We really truly appreciate it.
You know, if you could real quick mention, there is a shortage of nurses throughout this country, and also here. Just briefly on that, as to why it's so, by so impressive, your organization, bring up these professional young ladies.
Well, as he said, there's a shortage of nurses. There's also going to be a shortage of physicians, too, but nurses, we do it better. So it really is important to be a nurse, because I actually work at Vista Medical Center right up the street. Used to be a manager on the floor. I have since gotten promoted to the director of case management. So if you do happen to have issues while you're there, please seek me out. My name is Brenda. I will try and help you as best I possibly can, same with my team. But nurses are extremely important, because we do the grunt work. The physician comes in, he says hi, he says bye. Sometimes they don't even put the stethoscope on you. But it's that nurse that really knows what's going on with you. So with our population increasing, our communities are aging, and we need more nurses in the field. We need to mentor the young adults. So that's one of the things that our organization is doing, is trying to mentor young adults. That's one of the reasons why we do a gala pretty much every other year. We've been doing it here in Waukegan to promote scholarships for students. However, I want to tell you that we have had some challenges trying to give those scholarships away to the African-American students, because they're few. So what we've decided to do is to expand our scholarship to include all minority students, so that we can have more diversity within the nursing community. It's not as broad as we would like for it to be, but I can tell you that it's getting there. As a manager, I had a lot of brown and black employees, so it was really nice. I didn't target it that way, so I didn't want people to think that just because I was a black manager that I was bringing in help that way. You had to be qualified. So I can tell you that there are a lot of qualified minorities as well, but we need more nurses. If you have people that are interested in being a nurse, contact us. We have our website. So it's a nu-fichapter.org. You can look us up, see where our events are. If you need help, if you need support, we are your people. We are more than willing to help and do whatever it is that you have any need, that you have, so.
You have to say something.
I'm pleased.
You have to say something, and that's the founder. The founder of a sorority, that's special.
Okay, I am Carol Stewart, and I am one of the chapter founders, if you will. Darlene Williams, who was a resident of Waukegan, who is now deceased, was our first president. And she was really our founder. We do have a chapter as well in Hawaii. It's made up mostly of your army nurses that are stationed in Hawaii. So again, if you have any need for us at your picnic, to pass out water, like she said, or first aid, you know, let us know, and we'll be there for you. Thank you.
Ladies, we're going to come to the middle and center ourselves around the city of Waukegan, and Jane's going to come in, but before we do that, I want, you know, these ladies are everywhere throughout the city, throughout Lake County. And their promotion, exactly what they said, is about promoting, bringing in young ladies or men to be nurses and to be a professional in that, with an emphasis sometimes on African-Americans, because this is a great profession, that is needed, and the reward is beyond special. I know the many a times that I have had to go to the hospital, either with my mother, my children, myself, it is that frontline person, which is typically that RN, who's in there comforting and nurturing those patients. So I salute you. So on today, well, from July 7th through the 13th, the city of Waukegan proclaim this to be your day. Congratulations, and thank you for being a part of our community. Come on to the middle. Alderman, you know what we do. Yeah, we're trying to get, our goal is to try to be, right here, right here? All right. Our goal is trying to get the city of Waukegan in the middle of the flag, all right? Are we ready, ladies? Ladies, you're always welcome to stay. If not, we're about to do the business of the city. Whichever you prefer is fine. All right? All right, reports of communication, there being none. Community, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize, Doc.
Mayor.
Reports of communication, treasurer, Shaw.
We're going to give you a report on Yeoman Creek Dump. Yeoman Creek drains from the west of Macquarie, north of, quite a bit north of Sunset, but south of York House. It goes under Macquarie Road, it flows across Bonnybrook Golf Course, goes under Lewis Avenue, then turns and goes under Sunset there. There it flows through what used to be a bog, and continues down, and you see it next, near Grand Avenue, going under Grand Avenue, right by Yeoman Park, onto Powell Park, Roosevelt, and then meets with a south thing, becoming the Waukegan River, and flows to the river. The history of that bog, that peat bog, when I was a child, that used to catch on fire every couple of years. And the fire department would put out most of the flames and stuff, and it would smolder for years. Later, I wasn't here with the city, but the peat bog was evacuated and became a garbage dump with dirt people putting on top of it. Well, a number of different companies put contaminants into that dump area. It wasn't recognized as such a big problem until they started cleaning up the harbor. And once they tested the water from any heavy rain that came down there, there were minuscule amounts of contaminants that were flowing into Lake Michigan, and that's not allowed. So then what was the remediation plan? Remediation plan got to be where they would dig out a lot of this. I don't know exactly where they took it. They'd bring into dirt, they'd cover it with a great rubber membrane over the majority of the dump, so the water didn't drain through it. It drained to the side and continued down and became portable to be jumped into Lake Michigan. The group that was assigned, okay, so the basic assignment was the Yeoman Creek Remediation Group, and the amount of money that they were responsible for by percentages were assigned, okay? So Waukegan has about 33, 35% of the cost. BFI, the haulers, had 38, 39% of the cost. OMC had some of the cost. School District has some other portions of it. It was divided out, and a consent decree was done to a federal judge. The actual cost was estimated at $27 million to $30 million, and the timeframe is over 30 years. So we're about 15 years in. So our portion would have been about $7 to $9 million. We did not have to come up with the money in front. We get a cash call, so when you hear the Yeoman Creek cash call every six months, we pay as we go. So our portion is assigned, whatever they spent. We have an attorney on that remediation committee, and he represents us, but basically, we pay whatever portion that the bill is. So you'll hear it from time to time, coming up is the cash call. It was last city council, and we pay as we go, and we will continue to pay as we go our portion. We didn't have to have a bond. So the other situation was, we could have bonded out all that money and been paying interest on it, whatever. We don't do it that way. That's not the way it was set up. So we pay a cash call every six months. Anything else, Bob? Bob Long's heavily involved in this legal part of this.
I do want to assure the people that, just to add on to what Doc says, that we have very good scientific people, there's a very good management program in place, and Yeoman, and the dump at Yeoman Creek is solidified to the extent that it's possible to do with dirt on top of, and refuse on top of a peat bog. There's a limit to what you can do with that. There's no threat, it doesn't pose a threat to the community. The amount of toxins that come out of there are extreme, are really minuscule. This is not a major problem. It's been under the EPA guidelines, and under their inspection protocols, everything we do or that is done at the site is approved by the federal and the state EPA's. This is, as far as you're going to go on a closed landfill, this is as well managed as I've ever seen.
Okay. Thank you very much, Doc, and Bob, for that report regarding the Yeoman Creek landfill. Item six, Alderman Mosio.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion to approve a liquor license request for OE Sweet Tea Number 29 located 29 North Genesee Street, Waukegan, Illinois, 605 and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Abstain.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman...
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, Mayor, if I can make comments at this moment?
Sure.
I just want to make it very clear that I had some personal concerns concerning the next few items, A, B, and C. Those of you that don't know, I work full-time, forty hours a week, working with those with addiction of alcohol and other mood-altering substances. So I had concern, but because of talking to business owners and constituents, I vote aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye, thank you. Item B, motion to approve a liquor license request for Win-Win Restaurant and Bar, Inc., located at Thirty North Genesee Street, Waukegan, Illinois, six zero zero eight five, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Abstain.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye, thank you. Item C, motion to approve a liquor license request for Great Lakes Burger and Bourbon, located at Fifteen Oh Eight Washington Street, Waukegan, Illinois, six zero zero eight five, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Abstain.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye, thank you. Item D, zoning calendar, Twenty-Five Eighty-Four, One Hundred North Lewis Avenue, conditional use permit for lighting at Weiss Field. Just so people can know, there are a number of conditions. The school district has stated that they want to be good neighbors. So there was a number of conditions that were worked out with that. There won't be any parking on residential streets during events. People have to park in the Brookside Parking Lot. That was a concern of the neighbors, obviously. They didn't want parking all over. Also, all trash after events has to be picked up immediately after by the high school staff. Has to be picked up, so it's not blowing around in the middle of the night. There'll be no third party. What that means is the school district's not gonna run it out to somebody who wants to be able to turn the lights and have an event there. There also will be a number that the school district will let you know how many events are gonna have. Probably gonna be four to five football games, some soccer games, some graduation, and maybe some other things. Also, the lights have to be turned off thirty minutes after the activities are done. So they are fully vested in being a good neighbor, and this is long overdue. Waukegan is the only school in the conference that they play that does not have lights. So it gives a little bit of a scheduling, easier to schedule games when everybody has the same, as we could say, playing atmosphere. With that, I so move.
Alderman, can I make a comment? Yes. For me, it was only fifty-seven years too late. Yes, sir. Motion, there's a motion by Alderman Muzio, second by Alderman Kirkwood. And any questions to the motion?
Yes, I have a couple.
Motion, I'm sorry, Alderman Florian.
In reading the application that the school board submitted for this, one of the questions was how this would affect the value of the homes in the area surrounding the field. And the school district answered that it will increase the value of the homes because more people will want to come to Waukegan as a result of having lights on the football field. I'm wondering if there's someone here from the school district that can explain to me how they reasoned out the answer to that question. I'm sorry?
Excellent question.
Thank you. Nobody?
Yeah, Mr., I'm gonna say the operation, but he's the superintendent of facility operations. Did I say it right? Alright. I used to call it operation. Now they gave you a big old title, man. Alright, Mr. Mo.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Feel free to call me what you'd like, as we're all here working together. So thank you for the comments. So that was something that came up when we met with the community. And we're talking about property values, and it came up in the context of the capital improvement plan that we're talking about in all of our school buildings. So we want the school district to be more desirable for people that want to come into the community. We felt like this was a chance for some, an equitable measure with some of our other north suburban school districts. So this wouldn't be a limiting factor. We also know that some parents in some of the other communities, like the North Chicago, have made comments about playing at Waukegan on Saturdays. So that's really where that came from. That was brought up by some of our neighbors. And what we want to do is we want to make equality amongst ourselves with some of the other schools.
Okay, I have a couple other questions, as long as you're there. Is that okay?
Sure.
Is this gonna raise taxes on the community?
That is not our intent. No, we budgeted for this project.
Okay. The night of the zoning meeting that was held here, I believe you spoke at that also. Someone said that it's an effective way for our town to prosper. Can you explain how lights on a football field are gonna help our town prosper?
So I apologize. I missed that meeting. I believe that was on June thirteenth, if I recall.
Okay, must have been someone else that spoke that night. I apologize.
I don't know who made those specific comments, but it's our goal to bring the community together through this project. And I believe Alderman Muzio mentioned, it's not just about football. I know a lot of concerns and questions came up about that. This is about track and field, this is about band competitions, this is about high school graduations. A lot of events affecting a lot of students within our school district in all areas, including ROTC.
And if I may add, the city of Waukegan, Waukegan Public School District, if I'm not, is the largest in the central suburban leagues. We're south now, right?
Well, no, we're in the north suburban, so we are, but Stevenson's right there, Warren's right there, we're all right there.
And they have made, Alderman, they've made these steps to their school districts almost fifteen, twenty years ago. For us, and I'm gonna say it like I'm at East Campus, we were the big dogs in the central suburban league. When you came to Waukegan, you had to be prepared. One of the things from a lot of our children who started getting recruited by karma, by Warren at that time, now it has reached out to some of the, you know, the Catholic schools. Because the recruitment, when it comes to athletics, they follow where the big sports events are at. And if they're not happening in Waukegan, they're gonna go to where those kids are at. So from a benefit standpoint, for the time and the energy that these young men and these young ladies put into, whether it be football, track, now soccer, having those games at nighttime, bring in those recruits so those kids can then get the potential scholarship that all the rest of the kids are getting. So we're just really behind what we should have been twenty years ago. I'm gonna be taking a stretch, Greg. Probably during our junior and senior year, this was talked about, and it was no lights, no lights, but we missed out on those opportunities. Today, it is, it's a prerequisite that you have night games in our communities. Look at Warren, Libertyville, Vernon Hills. If you go to Vernon Hills, they built a whole complex where lights are everywhere, in a business district. So this is a huge, I think, opportunity for our young men to be engaged and make sure, and young ladies, to be engaged in understanding that playing sports is not just going out having fun, but it's serious business for you to potentially get a scholarship, whether it be athletic or academic. So, and I speak very passionately about this because, you know, I follow some of the football games and the basketball games, most of them at night, but in football games, we have to travel out. It's about time they traveled in to see our community. That is, you know, we said, what is the net benefit to me? Highlighting what Waukegan is, in the daytime and at night. That's my opinion, speaking as a defensive end.
I have another question, though, based on what you just said, though. You said that it's, a lot of it's based on recruiting. Well, can't they get recruited when they're at an away game as easily as they can at a home game?
Ooh. Man, now please, don't take this the wrong way, man. Did you play sport?
Yeah.
Man, recruiting at home games is, that is, answer to the question is, can you be recruited at both places? Yes, preferably. If a coach, and Coach Mo, please help me out, hey, Coach Kirkwood. If a coach said there's a player that you really wanna see, they typically like to come to the home game to see those players. And that's just the way it goes, yes.
We're getting off track.
I know.
Way off track.
I'm sorry, I got passionate about it.
Bottom line, we mentioned everything. Also, it's about time that we made our kids not feel like second-class citizens.
Yes.
It's about time. Call for a question.
Can I have you state your name into the mic, sir, and your position?
Yes, my name is LaBarre Moten, Chief Operations Officer for the school district.
Thank you, sir.
The superintendent is here. She wants to say something. We'll call for the question.
Good evening, Mayor, and all Aldermen in attendance. But this is also an equity issue. It's an equity issue on the standard that our kids are not applicable for scholarships.
Can you please speak up? Thank you.
Our kids are not applicable for scouts when they're out viewing other Friday games. And usually when college coaches are out on Friday night, where are they at on Saturday? Back at their universities. So if we want our students to have the same opportunities as other students in Lake Counties, we need to be able to offer these lights to Waukegan Public Schools. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions? Alderman Florian. Thank you, ma'am. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Yes.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, zoning calendar, Twenty-Five Eighty-Five, Southwest Corner of Waukegan Road and Birdwood Drive. Site plan approval per the McGaw Business Park Overlay District, and ISO move.
Alright, motion by Alderman Seager, correction, motion by Alderman Muzio, second by Alderman Seager. Any other questions to the motion? I'm gonna take the second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye. Item E, oh wait, I just, no, I'm sorry, item F. Zoning calendar, Twenty-Five Eighty-Six, Fifteen Fifty, Bridge Drive. Site plan approval per the McGaw Business Park Overlay District, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Muzio, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye. Okay, item H, motion to approve an ordinance amending prohibited parking zones on Pine Street, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Muzio, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item G, Alderman.
Oh, I'm sorry, good lord. Zoning calendar, Twenty-Five Eighty-Seven, Northwest Corner of Waukegan Road and Lakeside Drive. Site plan approval per the McGaw Business Park Overlay District, I'm sorry, ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Muzio, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item H.
He did it.
I did that one, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Your Honor. I, motion to adopt an ordinance adding handicap parking at Eight Forty-Three McAllister Avenue. That is a typo. It's Eight Forty-Three.
Eight Forty.
Eight Forty-Three.
Aye, so move.
Motion by Alderman Muzio, second by Alderman Bolton. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried.
And J, motion to adopt the presented ordinance amending Chapter Twenty-One Parking Prohibited at All Times on Specific Streets, and ISO move.
This is actually a duplicate of item H.
Okay, so.
You can skip it.
So item J is just a repeat of item H, everybody, on your calendars, okay? That one we're gonna skip. Alright, item seven, old business. Motion, there's a motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Muzio, to reconsider the council vote June Seventeenth, Twenty-Nineteen, item nine A, a motion to approve ordinance amending the city of Waukegan Liquor Video Gaming Code by establishing a downtown entertainment district. Any question?
Not a question, Your Honor, but I'm gonna address, we wrangled back and forth about regulating gaming. Talking to the, and I'm on record and people know that I think distance is arbitrary. I've talked to Council Long, I want, bringing this up now, but I want the rest of the Aldermen to think about it. Maybe one way to regulate it is by square footage of the business. So just think on that for a little bit. Maybe that's the way to do it, is regulate it by the square footage of the business. We all want regulation in some way. I'm throwing out an idea of regulation by square footage instead of distance, which I think, I mean, I don't wanna get into discussion now about it, because we'll be here all night. But I want you to chew on that and think about that. Alderman Taylor.
I'd like to throw out an idea of making sure that a business, the reason we did gaming to begin with was to help businesses stay afloat. So I would like to consider that maybe you have to be in business for a minimum amount of years, whether that be three years, five years, whatever it is, before you come and ask for a gaming license. Because I would like to know that you can handle your business first, that you are not relying on this money to run your business. That you have a way of, that your business is actually successful, and this is just additional money to help you with maintenance, or whatever it may be. But if you are relying on gaming money to run your business alone, I don't think you have a good enough business plan.
And again, real quick.
Alderman Muzio.
Hate to get off on this tangent, but the other thing that I've thought about, too, is, and I don't know where this will go with the proposed development at Fountain Square, but the way we, the licensing fee for the machines that we charge the business owners, it's a thousand dollars a machine. Well, that's great for Thornton's, 'cause they're making money hand over fist. Other places that aren't making as much money, it's a little bit more of a hit. Everything else in this country is taxed on a percentage, not a flat fee. So I've also asked Council Long to look into that, to see if we could charge each operator a percentage of what they're bringing home. 'Cause some guys, I mean, they have a couple of machines, but they're not making any money on it. Other places, I mean, they're making money hand over fist. Five thousand dollars, that's a drop in the bucket. So that's another thing I'd like you guys, as a council, I think we could chew on that a little bit as we go forward. That's it, Your Honor, let's move on.
Alright, yeah, there. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Abstain.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Because I have a better understanding, 'cause I had previously voted no, but now that I have a better, I have a better understanding, I vote yes.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Muzio.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Muzio, to approve an ordinance amending the city of Waukegan Liquor Video Gaming Code by establishing a downtown entertainment, is that the same thing?
No.
Okay.
This is the actual, this is the actual ordinance.
Oh, this the ordinance, sorry. So this the ordinance right here, everybody. No questions. Roll call, please.
Wait, 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 wait. We can't ask questions on this?
It's the same thing.
No, it's the other. No, the other was just a motion to hear it. This is to discuss it.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought we just, alright, I apologize. I thought we were just discussing it. So, any questions to the motion? Alderman Taylor.
My thing is, is number one, I think if you're gonna make this big of an area, this should have gone through a committee like everything else goes through. And to just bring it up under new business, and now in this case, old business, without having public comment on it, I think it is not transparent for the community. So I have an issue with that. And like I said, I just feel like giving out gaming licenses, there's been a history of businesses downtown not making it. And they're there for a couple of years, they're gone, and I feel like if all they're opening up is for gaming, then we're back to running gaming parlors, which is what we were trying to get rid of. So those are my concerns. And I echo the point she made about it not going through a committee so that the public can make comment on it. That's my biggest concern with this. When it doesn't go
When it doesn't go through the committee process, the community has no chance to ask questions and get answers.
And I agree with you, uh, and, and we all know what this was really, what this is all about, the decision that we had to make, and I really explained it to you. But let's talk about, I noticed, Alderman, you said about the business that didn't make it, but we never talked about the business that did make it, who was still there, who were in a good business. So, while we may say that they closed, and let's talk about who closed, Big Ed closed, but he moved to another location. And he didn't even have gaming.
Yeah.
He got gaming afterwards. He would've stayed there, but the location was too small. There was a, a business that came right in after that, we closed them down because of some, some inappropriate things that was going on. So, I think there's a, a, there is, the scale happens on both end. What we're trying to do, and I thought what we, all we're trying to do is find a better process to make sure that those who receive the gaming don't just get it for one reason, one reason only. And as we said in the past, we were looking at gaming, we were looking either at, at liquor sales and plate sales when it comes to restaurants. That's, that's always been my golden objective. So, while I hear your point, I also, uh, do believe going through a process in which you said the, 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 through the committee, while that was probably the traditional way, and I'm almost certain, if you take a look at, everything that's come through, you guys, has gone through the committee, understanding the reason why we had to make the decision about this particular, for this particular issue, for that one particular situation.
But he wasn't even asking for gaming.
It's, but it's, it's, it's part of the, the deal, though, I, I, I understand that.
He wa, he was basically asking for a liquor license, not for gaming. So, I'm not sure what led to this ordinance when they weren't even asking for gaming, and now all of a sudden we have both alcohol and gaming.
Well, liquor and gaming goes hand in hand, a- as we all.
They don't have to.
No, I'm, I'm just telling you what it is, the reality of it is, they do.
Yeah.
Well, gaming always goes with liquor, but liquor doesn't always have to go with gaming, am I right about that?
Yes. You, they don't have to have it, no, but I, I'm just telling you what, what has been played out over the last two or three years since it's been here.
This just seems like another mini casino.
See, this is what happens when you try to regulate every iota of everybody's business.
Yeah, that's true.
There's confusion and overregulation, too much government.
You wanna be governor of the North Shore?
Sir.
That's what we are.
Sir, thank you. All right, any more questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I'm staying.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried. Uh, item eight, government and operations oversight committee, and that's Alderman Bolton, Alderman Bolton.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash O, an ordinance fixing the salaries and wages to be paid to management and non-union employees of the city of Waukegan, Illinois, effective May first, twenty nineteen, and I so move.
Uh, motion by Alderman, uh, Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Taylor, any questions to the motion?
No question but a comment, Mayor, you know, items like this, I would like to see, I mean, I know we, council, we have access to supporting documentation, but I wanna make sure that the public is aware that those documents, the relevant, uh, documents are, are available for their views, um, viewing on our website or at the clerk's office, that they can be aware of what's going on.
And they are, correct?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, they are, yeah, yes, they are.
One thing that's published everywhere with the audit is the annual treasury report that just brackets, uh, yeah, all the employees by, by, by name, so, starting with, I believe, twenty-five thousand, a thousand-dollar vendors, and going right up through the top salary, so I think you ca, I believe you can get on the website immediately and look up by bracket, uh, any of the city employees.
Right, thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, new business. Uh, motion by, uh, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Florian, to approve ordinance modifying the order of business to create a consent agenda for, for meeting of the city council. Bob, you wanna explain that one a little bit?
Yeah, every, uh, couple of meetings, we have a long, we have a lot of items on here, we, we go through a process, put everything on an omnibus agenda, and you vote it all, and we always have to explain what we're doing, and, and go through a bunch of machinations to put this on. All the consent agenda does is essentially automate this, so that the mayor will go through, and, and when he's preparing the, when the agenda's being finalized, select items that he believes will be non-controversial, and put them in a group on the consent agenda. Any Aldermen will still have the right, if they have questions or wish to take it off, to simply say, we want item five F, or six Q, or whatever the number happens to be off, and that'll be considered separately, but this will allow just group voting on a bunch of topics to try to move the meeting along over things that don't need a lot of explanation, or don't present some, uh, significant issues, you know, so. One of the last agendas we had involved buying, I think, ten different types of chemicals for the water plant, oh, we all need the chemicals in the water, we get, we, the EPA requires us to do it, the DNR requires us to do it. Why do we need to debate it? We got the best price, and we could've, um, and we ended up having that discussion just for that. That's the kind of thing that'll be on the consent agenda.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do, does the items on the consent, consent agenda still go through committee, then?
Yeah, yeah, all, all, it all goes through, simple, we come on the council floor, you know, we do the, used to do the underbass, that's gonna, it's a new, a different way of saying omnibus, that's all.
Uh, yes.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Uh, motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve an ordinance permitting alcoholic beverages in scoop and festival zones. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I'm staying.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, most of Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve ordinance establishing special curfew for school, any questions?
Question.
Alderman Taylor.
Um, does this also incu, um, include Music Fest, because in the documentation, it looked like it did, but it's not on here, per se? Special curfew for that?
Yes, um, uh, Chief? I'm pretty sure you guys want same thing to apply for, doing Music Fest?
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do we amend that to include Music Fest, then?
Yeah, we can. Um, there's a motion on the floor, this is the, the same people with the motion, to amend it to include Music Fest. Any questions? All in favor?
No, wait a minute, just a minute. So, uh, I don't, I just shut down my iPad, but I recall from reading the doc, supporting documentation, that there were like three different, uh, curfews, uh, twelve, or age fourteen to sixteen, then sixteen to eighteen, eighteen and over, something of that nature.
And they each started like at eight o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock.
So, the question that comes to mind is, how are those separate curfews gonna be communicated on mass? How, how is the twelve-year-old or fourteen-year-old gonna know that they gotta get out of here by eight o'clock, gotta be home by eight?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna communicate that in our normal promotion, and typically, you know, we're gonna communicate, communicate that to the parents.
Yeah, but how? I mean, that's, that's one of the challenges that, uh, we have as Aldermen, and, and I think the city as a whole is doing mass communications on, on any information that needs to go out. Um, and I could see where this, I mean, certainly the police are the experts on this, but I could see where it might be a problem. You got Scoop Loop, you got a bunch of folks down there, five thousand people down there, and then one group of people have to leave by eight, but the next group of people have to leave by nine, and there's a third group of people who have to leave by ten. So, it could lend itself to some confusion.
No, typically what we try to do is saying that while they, if they're not accompanied by an adult, they would have to leave.
Mm-hmm.
That's what, that's what the, the goal is. Now, if you're not accompanied by an adult, then, yes, we're gonna be asking, uh, you know, asking those young men or young ladies at that particular, those particular ages, at those particular times to leave. The goal is for us to create a family event, and a lot of times, parents say, hey, go off, I wanna be, if you're twelve, thirteen, fourteen, they don't wanna be around me and you.
Right, I understand the purpose, I'm just, I'm just saying that.
On a communication standpoint, we, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna utilize our normal process of communicating, and obviously, on the day of, we started just, you know, just really getting out that word, that's probably gonna be the most effective way.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to suggest that we also liaise with the school district, maybe they can help spread that message as well.
Absolutely, I mean, some of schools start, some of schools start.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not in school, yeah, but some, they're not in school.
Let's get, get those kids back in school and give them a message.
Yeah, but we're, 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 but we will, we certainly, and I think we, but, uh, honestly, Alderman, we've been using the curfew thing for the last, with two or three scoops, so, the, I, it's already, it's kind, it's out there.
Yeah.
And we're just kind of redefining it a little bit.
Okay, all right, I'm with you.
Yeah, but thank you, that's, that's a good question.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
So, is this the amendment that we're voting on?
Yes, yeah, well, this is for the amendment.
Okay.
Uh, no, we can just do all.
The whole thing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried on the amendment now, we're voting, uh, on the amendment now. Now for, uh, the actual amendment, so, same, uh, it'll be the same person make the motion, edible Alderman Taylor and Alderman Bolton, first by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to approve ordinance establishing special curfew for school and Music Fest. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, item D, motion by, uh, Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Moseo, to approve ordinance creating class E liquor license for Lucky Foods, thirty-eight North Genesee Street, which is, for those who don't know, Old Fong's Grill.
Grill.
Restaurant. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I'm staying.
Alderman Newsom.
Uh, nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
Oh.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, uh, motion by, uh, Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Moseo, correction. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Moseo, to approve the ordinance creating video gaming, uh, video gaming license for Lucky Foods, thirty-eight North Genesee Street, Waukegan, Illinois, uh, again, this is for the former Fong's Restaurant. Any questions to the motion?
Did Fong's have gaming when they were in business?
No.
No, no, they did not, the Fong's did not.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
I'm staying.
Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Taylor.
No.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried, uh, motion by Alderman Moseo, second by Alderman Rivera, to approve revenue payments dated July one, twenty nineteen, a total amount of three million, five hundred nine thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Uh, most of Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Florian, to approve regular payroll dated June twenty-first, twenty nineteen, a total amount of one million, five hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars and sixteen cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Uh, motion's passed and carried, motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Turner, to approve final cash, correction, motion to approve police uniform allowance and holiday cash out payroll dated June twenty-first, twenty nineteen, a total amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-one cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Yeah, yeah. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Taylor, to approve final cash out for name listed on the, on the agenda, payroll dated June twenty-first, twenty nineteen, a total amount of nine thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and eighteen cents. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moseo.
Aye.
Motion passed and carried. Uh, motion by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager, to approve all rifle sales applications. Any questions? Roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Motion, uh, by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Moseo, to approve all block party applications. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item ten, ordinance says there being none. Item eleven, closing items, Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Just wanna take this opportunity to thank all the residents for coming out for the Independence, uh, parade. I thought it was a good turnout, even though it rained towards the end. Also, for the residents of Fourth Ward, I'll be putting out information regarding Operation Cleanup. So, be looking for that. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Operation Clean Sweep. Alderman Newsom passes.
Uh, Alderman Turner.
Thank you. Uh, we had a war, I had a sixth ward meeting here in Council Ten, Chambers last Thursday. It was pretty good turnout. I was hoping for more, and hopefully in the next and future meetings, we'll have a larger turnout. But got some good information, took some great questions from, uh, from our neighbors, and, and I think it was a very good event. I look forward to holding more. Um, excuse me, ward meetings, uh, however, I remind all residents of the sixth ward, we can have a ward meeting at your house anytime I'll come. Uh, anytime you call me, I'll meet with you individually or with you in a group of neighbors. Uh, also look forward to, uh, be working with the neigh, uh, commu- community policing officer, Officer Savas, uh, to, uh, to schedule more neighborhood watch meetings. I wanna meet with every neighborhood watch group in, uh, sixth ward, and look forward to doing that. We got another dumpster, uh, drop-off for, uh, Clean Sweep, and that's gonna be at, uh, on Franklin Street in front of North School on August seventeenth, between seven AM and ten AM. Um, we had a great turnout at the last two dumpsters that we put out, and got a lot of, um, materials that would still be laying in people's basements or yards or whatever, but picked up a lot of material in those instances. This morning, uh, I was responding to a citizen's, um, observation and complaint regarding trash and, uh, and a mattress. And as I was talking with our neighbor, another neighbor, someone walked by, walking their dog. Neighbor across the street had his two dogs out unleashed. One of his dogs ran across the street and was nearly hit by a car. So, I mention this to say and remind everyone that we do have an ordinance. It's only common sense. Keep your dog on a leash. Do not allow your dogs to run loose. Whether you think they're extremely well-trained or not, it's just not a good practice. Also, a caution about speeding cars in neighborhoods. I've had several complaints about cars speeding on side streets, and, and I hear it all the time, and I've heard it for years. I gotta tell you, I'm working directly with the police department, and, uh, they're setting up roving, uh, posts, if you will. They posted up monitoring traffic stop signs, and they're looking for speeders. So, if you're speeding in the sixth ward, don't. And that's it. Thank you very much for your attention.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you. Um, I, I would like to echo, uh, Alderman Kirkwood's, uh, comments regarding the, uh, Fourth of July parade. Uh, the Park District does a, a fine job of, of putting that on. It was unfortunate, um, that the, uh, Mother Nature didn't, uh, uh, help us out a little bit and hold off until we finished. Uh, but, uh, but I just wanna thank everyone that did come out and support the parade. Um, I would also like to make a comment, uh, regarding, uh, the earlier comments. Uh, the Glenn Denning, uh, and, and Whitmore's, uh, issue with the, the parking and the block party. Um, I, I, I do support having community events. The, the community events have to be done properly, though. Um, I, I do support them having an annual event. I think it was a, a wonderful thing that they had. Uh, I just look forward to proper event applications going on next year. Um, and to answer, oh, uh, one comment that was made, um, I, the garage sales that are occurring in the, uh, in all the wards, and I say all the wards, it's just not one single ward. Uh, we, we do have a serious issue with that. People do just, you know, open it up on Saturdays and Sundays 'cause they know code enforcement is not, um, around during that time. One conversation that I did have, uh, with Mike was the possibility of maybe, uh, working with code enforcement, so when their contract comes up, uh, we rotate the shift, so we do have somebody on staff for Saturday to secure that there is somebody going around. Um, other than that, it's really up to the aldermen, I believe, to kinda drive around and see if it's happening or if it's not happening. And to answer the question, yes, there is a permit process, and there is a fee that needs to be done for that. Um, uh, thank you very much.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I just wanted to, um, talk about the fact I had my ward meeting. We had really great attendance. Um, the staff was excellent in answering questions. I got a lot of really good feedback from, uh, some of the residents who attended, and I plan on making this, uh, an annual event. So, um, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Um, just a couple of things. In addition to Scoop on July, um, twelfth and thirteenth, there's Greek Fest off of, off of Oak Plain Road, so don't forget that event. Um, I will agree with the resident on, um, the, uh, Whitmore's event. I saw that more of a special event than a block party to, I was at the event, and I thought it was more of a car show than it was a block party. Um, the last thing I wanna remind people is, it is Fourth of July, obviously, this week. Please watch your dogs. Even if you have invisible fence, fireworks can make them break that. Keep them leashed. Do not bring them to firework events. Please keep them away from the beach. Um, but please be careful because they will run when they hear fireworks, so keep that in mind. And I wanna wish everybody a great holiday and thank everybody who came to the parade yesterday. You were truly Waukegan strong. The aldermen got through the parade, and then it, the heavens opened up. So, we lucked out, but the rest of the poor people that were in the parade, it just was, it was tough, let me tell ya. But thank you for being Waukegan strong and, and working through that. Thank you.
Alderman Bolton. Yes, I'd like to announce the first ward is having their Operation Clean Sweep Monday, July fifteenth. Flyers will be out. Um, please follow the directives on the flyer, and the time will be eight AM till three PM. And the location is Eighth Street and Adams. Thank you. I too also like to say, I was there at the parade. Uh, those of you that don't know, I'm under doctor's orders not to do extensive walking because I've had foot surgery. But I, however, was there, and it was exciting parade, of course, until it got rained on. Also sending condolences out to the Cotton family. Once again, I was coming from, um, a procedure from the hospital when this event happened, when I got the call. Me at least to say, I'll definitely be in prayer for that family. Also, it was addressed, earlier comments in reference to the Barwell Community and Waukegan Housing Project. It has never left the agenda. We are ecstatic about what's about to take place. So, uh, more announcements will be coming in reference to, um, breaking ground concerning the Waukegan housing, uh, units in the first ward. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say that yesterday, even though we did get drowneded at the end, including myself, uh, everybody had, had fun, and a lot of, a lot of the kids, uh, there was no, no problems whatsoever. I enjoyed myself with, uh, all the people, and I'd like to say thank you very much to Park Board, everyone involved in that parade. I thank you. Thank you very much.
Alderman Moseo.
Your Honor, I, I think with the evidence we have now of ETO, I think we need to move this up in either as a council or whatever legal means we have to put pressure on these companies. My whole thought before was, we needed evidence. I think we have the evidence now. So, we have to put the pressure on the agencies that can do something about, or we have to do whatever we can do about, but I think it's time that we move that to the front of the table. With that, motion to adjourn.
Second. Those are two. Uh, before we go, I do want, I wasn't there for Alderman Turner's, uh, award meeting. To the new aldermans, you have been doing an amazing job of getting out there to the front line, meeting head-on, your constituents. I say to you today, that's how you retain. They know you, understand you. That is what being a Waukegan alderman is all about. So, I salute all of you for that. And the enthusiasm that, from the feedback, from what you're saying and some, what I'm hearing out there, is outstanding. Keep it up. It's gonna pay off. I promise you that. Uh, with that being said, Alderman Moseo, uh, the, the ETO, and I, I need to correct, I think the young lady said earlier, uh, there's no way that a state representative or a state senator or federal person can say that the city of Waukegan has the authority. It has been clear from day one that the authority lies in the hands of the Illinois EPA or the federal EPA. The regulatory authority lies in their hands. They know that. We know that. This council has already assigned on to US Senator Durbin, US Senator, uh, Duckworth, US Congressman Brad Snyder, that we want something done. We took the first steps. We then gave them all of the information that is needed to make the decision. Let's be clear. If this team up here, and I'm saying myself and the aldermen had the authority to shut them down, we would do that. We will continue to send those, those, uh, testing results to the proper agencies with a loud voice from myself, from the aldermen, and from you, the citizens, that it's time to do something as it pertains to this crisis. And that's what I'm gonna call it, a crisis. But let's be clear, everyone. We, the city of Waukegan, does not have the regulatory authority to shut them. If we wanted to go there tomorrow and say, "Shut down," they'll look at us and keep on, 'cause we don't have that authority. And I will be calling Alderman, uh, I'm sorry, State Representative Mayfield, if that's something your wife heard from her, and get a correction or a better understanding as to why that's being said, because we do not, according to the Illinois IEPA and the US EPA. And I went to the seminar stating who has the authority to do what. I want that to be clear, Alderman, but we've done everything humanly possible that we can as, as a city to move forward on that. With that being said, uh, most of our aldermen, Moseo, second Alderman Turner, to adjourn. All those in favor? Most is passed and carried. Thank you, everyone.